All the meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board to order. Today is December 22, 2020. And it's six o'clock and we are meeting via Zoom conference line. We have Mary Ashcroft present, chairing the meeting, Joe DiNardo, our clerk, Sharon Russell, Select Board member, and Aaron Jones, Select Board member. And we're hoping that John Paul Fignit will be joining us.
He's on.
He has already joined.
Thanks JP. All right, so we have a full board tonight. Approval of orders, the orders are here in the Select Board room. And I think at the end of tonight's meeting, Bill will put them over in the town clerk's office. So please peruse them and sign them. And we'll go to approval of Select Board meeting. And there are actually three sets of minutes for December 8. But we will start with the main meeting, which began at six o'clock. Bill sent out the minutes. Would you folks, assuming you had a chance to look at those? So I will entertain a motion for the main Select Board meeting minutes on December 8.
Move to accept.
Sharon's move to accept.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any corrections, deletions, discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aaron, you're abstaining, I would guess?
Since you weren't there.
Aaron?
Oh, I had said aye.
I think because you weren't present for most of the meeting?
Okay, I abstained.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I didn't put him on there because you didn't vote him in until the end of the meeting.
Right, right. Okay, and I'm still listed as clerk for the purposes of this meeting. Okay, a meeting on the 8th. Okay, now, we had two other meetings that same day. One was at 4:30. This was the Personnel Committee meeting of the whole. Bill sent around these this morning, I believe, or this afternoon. They were very brief. Meeting was called to order at 4:30. We went into executive session immediately to discuss the personnel matter. The meeting came out of executive session at 4:50 PM. No action was taken, move to adjourn. So is there any motion to accept the minutes of that Personnel Committee meeting of the whole?
So move.
Motion's made?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aaron, you're abstaining from that one too?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The second meeting that same day was at 5:00 PM. It was called to order. Present were Mary Ashcroft, John Paul Fignit, Sharon Russell, and Joe DiNardo. We went into executive session on a personnel matter to interview individual applicants for the vacant Select Board. And individually, we interviewed them, Chris Howland, Paul Racine, Aaron Jones, and Barbara Noyes-Pulling. The meeting came out of executive session at 5:59. No action was taken because we went into our main meeting then. Is there any motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move.
Motion's made, is there a second?
I'll second if I'm meeting.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the five o'clock Personnel Full Select Board meeting, say aye.
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 Okay, Aaron, you're abstaining on that one too?
I am.
Thank you. Okay, we've taken care of it.
You'll get the vote next week.
You're right. We're warming up.
He won't get the, he won't, he won't get the vote for another year. Yeah, next year.
That's right, yeah. Okay, so do we have any questions from the floor or public comment? Folks who are not on tonight's agenda, who would like to be heard?
Howard Burgess, Mary, I have something.
Yes, please.
A question came up about the name spelling of Conner Drive. Whether it was C-O-N-N-E-R, C-O-N-N-O-R. The 911 system, GPS and everything added, was spelled with the OR. Our town maps, town maps that we have like in the Listers Office, there's two of them, had OR on them, yet everything else that we had in the grand list was ER. So I did a little research and Conner Drive is in Green Acres. And Green Acres began in 1968. And from the very beginning, the street was named with C-O-N-N-E-R. And so that's really what it ought to be. In fact, at one point along the way, the road sign would put up with an OR. And Byron could tell you that he changed it due to some complaints from property owners to change it over. Anyways, contacting 911, in order to change this in a 911 system, I need to have authorization from the Select Board. This is something that somehow, I think it accidentally got misspelled and put on some maps. National Survey did a great big map years ago and probably in the 1980s, had the OR on it. And then another road name map in 1998, which was done in 1998, that's in the office, was OR. But it really needs to be ER. So.
So I would move that we authorize Howard to ER the road.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded by Aaron. Was that you or Joe?
That was Sharon.
That was Sharon, okay. Motion's made and seconded.
I don't think my voice is that deep.
I think three of us might have talked at once.
I think that's what happened. Any further discussion? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, Howard? Thanks for catching that, by the way.
That's it, no, that's all.
Well, actually, the original thanks goes to Byron, who had tasked me with getting basketball hoops, moved back from the road. And when I asked Bill for an address, we couldn't find C-O-N-N-O-R Road.
So it was the basketball survey that did it?
It was the basketball survey. You never know what you're going to get in a basketball survey.
You know, when I talked with 911, their feeling was that it should have been OR. And he said, we really think it should be OR, but it isn't. I dug it, but it's ER, so.
Okay, well, thanks to Byron and to JP. Appreciate it.
Byron, Byron gets the credit.
Okay. Any other questions from the floor, public comment, people who wish to be heard who are not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move down to, oh, I will interrupt myself to say that Attorney Kevin Brown will be joining us at approximately 6:30. So we'll interrupt if we need to at that time to take his call. Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant.
Good evening. Don't have a lot for the group tonight. In the packet, we have the updated schedule and committee agenda items. It's not much change on that. Number two is a list of the municipal planning grant awards from around the state, including our own, which is on page three for the Pocket Park Grant. Number three is, was addressed to the board. More applies to Kerry and to Byron, but there's a change in the, in how the state is going to deliver the certificate of highway mileage. So they're just distributing it a different way. So Kerry's already got that and aware of that.
Does Byron, excuse me, Bill, does Byron have a copy of this?
You haven't seen that yet? Okay, I'll leave a copy for you. It's just they're delivering electronically rather than in the mail. So I'll put that in your box. And the last is just some information from the high school on their scholarship award process for this coming year.
Okay, so, well, the first deadline they have is April 9. So I think we've got a little time there.
We do.
Okay, thank you.
And that's everything I have. One thing I did want to follow up on from the last meeting is we did get some feedback from a town resident that was listening in on our meeting and asked us about the generator contract and that she thought we'd already approved it earlier this year. I went, I went and contacted, I went back and contacted them. And we had done it in July, but the way, the way it was approved and paid for, we actually only paid for part of the contract. We paid for maintenance on the four smaller generators, but not on the one at the school. So after, after talking with them, they agreed to honor the contract price and put it on their schedule. So it just got serviced just a little while ago, for the first time, actually, in about nine months, because we hadn't had it on the contract. So that's been done and they have it, they'll have it done again before the year, before the June 30th, end of the fiscal year. So there was a couple of issues with their reminders and the way we presented it, returned the contract to them, but it has been fixed and we have only, we did not pay for another contract. So that'll come up again in June.
Okay, thank you. Good catch, Lydia. Anything else, Bill?
That is everything I have.
Anybody have any questions for Bill? Okay, let's move then to Kerry Clark, our town clerk and treasurer.
Hi there. I also don't have that much tonight. I just wanted to update on the audit process. Mary and I were able to sit down with Andrew from Empire, who is our auditor, this morning, and that went well. And we will finalize things momentarily. For the most part, everything looks good. And more detail will be forthcoming in his report in a couple of weeks. I also wanted to kind of follow up a little bit on the discussion that was being had with the transfer station depreciation account in the last Select Board meeting, or maybe two ago. I dropped an email to TD Bank, who takes care of our accounts. And just kind of put it out there about what was being discussed about the depreciation account. And I think before we finalize anything, which is obviously down the road, I think we should probably have a discussion on the more particular details. It's not, it's not something that they usually do with a cap of any kind of money. It would have to be discussed how you would want to handle that. There's a couple of different ways he suggested. So I think we should maybe put that on for future discussions.
Yeah, we also raised this with Andrew Simons today, our auditor. And I think it might be a good idea to run any ideas by him. So if we could revisit this bill, maybe next week's or next meeting's agenda, if we could add that? Thank you. And also, if we could add, if Andrew is ready with the audit report, he did want to visit with the full board. I think it's wise, once a year to visit with our auditor. Things are, you know, there's nothing irregular at all. He just wants to do the annual rundown and give us an idea of where we are. And this is particularly useful, I think, because we will need, I think, to make some decisions, certainly when we're setting the tax rate. And he has some information about our use of some of the funds that he'll want to share with us for that. So two items for our next agenda.
Correct. And also, I think this might be on our agenda, but I was meeting with the superintendent of the schools in our district, Christopher Sell. And he just wanted to know of a date for pre-town meeting. And I think that might be something we're discussing a little later today. But if we could come to a decision on that, then I can let him know of a final date. Everything kind of is going to go, move very fast after the holidays, when we get into the town report and pre-town meeting and then town meeting. So if I could keep the communication open to the school district, that would be great.
Yes, please. Well, let's move that up. This is new business item B, board to discuss pre-town meeting date and plans. I did talk with Lynette Galapo, Chair of the School Board, and she was in touch with Chris as well. And the suggested date, which our two boards will have to agree upon, would be Tuesday, January 19th, beginning at seven o'clock. So I'll entertain a motion to approve that date and time.
I so move. Do we have to add in that, that it is going to be virtual?
Actually, I think that's a good idea, yes. A virtual town meeting. Because then we were going to discuss how it was going to happen. So I'll accept that as part of the motion. Pre-town.
Yep. Don't move.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? This might be a good time also to say, Matt Geddy, our moderator, has been in touch. Is Matt on the phone by any chance?
He is not.
Okay. He said he might, might not join tonight, but he and I have both done Zoom meetings. And so, and Bill has as well, and others in this group. There are a couple of ways to include both people calling in without video capability, being allowed to post questions. Probably, Bill suggested, on the town's webpage or in, what, info@townrutlandtown?
We could use our general email address of rutlandtown@rutlandtown.com. So anybody could just email that and we can forward the question to get it addressed to the appropriate person.
Right. So we're envisioning Bill catching those emails as they come in. Or if you're a video live on a Zoom meeting, there is a feature to raise your hand. And we'll accommodate both of, and there's also a chat feature. So questions can be posted there. So between Bill and Matt, I think they will be able to call on folks and pass the questions to those members of the Select Board and the School Board who are answering them. So more details to follow. My understanding with, after talking with Lynette, is that the supervisory union will probably set up the meeting and assist with it, but more details to come. Okay, any questions about that before we, I don't think we've taken a vote yet? Okay, if not, I will take a vote on the motion to have our pre-town meeting on January 19th via video conferencing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else?
Mary, the, Bill will be posting the budgets on the website so folks can see them and make their questions up.
That was what we had discussed previously, yeah. So Bill, we have the capacity to do that, okay?
Be sure do.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Joe, for the reminder. Okay, any questions of Kerry Clark? Okay. Thank you, Kerry. Nice job decorating, by the way, you and, and I think Marcia, all chipped in and got the place decorated.
Thank you.
The tree out front, was that Byron?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you, Byron. All right, Barbara Noyes-Pulling, Town Planning Commission Chair.
Yes, hi. Not too much going on with the Planning Commission, but I can report back on a couple of items, one of them being the archaeological site in the Thomas property. And then down on the agenda, we have the municipal planning grant we can talk about. But first, the archaeological, you asked me to get a copy of the survey that was done. So I was able to obtain a copy of that and get some other information, some additional information from the state about that site. The study and survey were done in 2005 for Act 250, when the armory, the new armory, was built there. That's the site, the most significant site, is considered a rare one and possibly a ceremonial one, going back a few thousand years. There are fewer than a dozen sites statewide that have had as much professional archaeological work as the one on the Thomas parcel. And, and there's another track there that is, the state also considers archaeologically sensitive, but it was not evaluated in as much detail as, as the one that we think is a ceremonial site. So I've got, I've got a copy of the survey map. The state is not comfortable with that being widely disseminated. So I will take whatever instructions or advice you have at this point, with what to do with that map and where to go from here.
Well, why don't we have the map on file with Bill Sweet and no copies are authorized? Anybody wants to see it, they can go look at it in his office.
Okay, I'll treat that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, motion carries. Thank you, Barbara. What's next?
The municipal planning grant, if you want to talk about, if you want to move that up or?
Yeah, let's go down to that. New business item A, the board to vote on accepting the municipal planning grant. Bill mentioned in our packet was the information that showed all of the statewide grants, including one to Rutland Town. We have to officially authorize, we have to officially accept the grant. And he also sent her, did he or Barbara send around the State of Vermont Grant Agreement, which is two pages and then quite a few pages of attachments? Did everyone have a chance to review that? Okay, this is for a, an award of $13,500. The town's match is 10%. We thought it was more than that, but it's 10% of $1,350.
To make a motion that we accept the grant for the 13, the, well, the total grant is, or project is $15,000, grant award of $13,500.
Okay, motion's made, is there a seconded?
Second.
Would you accept an amendment to have me sign electronically on behalf of the board, Joe?
Absolutely.
Okay, JP?
Sure.
Okay. Any discussion of the grant? If not, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have ourselves a planning grant. Anything else? Yep.
Is that a grant for a spoken study or does it include some engineering?
The way, go ahead, Barbara.
Yeah, it is both. There will be some engineering, engineering work there. We'll do a, we'll do a really complete survey of the area, figure out what permits are needed, design, we'll do a design of the recreational amenities. And also, part of the grant will be used to design what these historical links will be.
Great.
So it's, 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 it's a design, but it puts the town in a great position to go for a construction grant afterwards. You know, that's, that's the name of the game. Take one step at a time. And, and the next step in this process would be to come up with an agreement with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, that other hat that I wear, because the Regional Planning Commission will be administering this grant.
Thank you, Barbara.
Okay. Any more questions? Did we vote on that? I think we did.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, Barbara, anything else?
No, that's it for me.
Any other questions of Barbara? All right, thank you very much. Mike Rowe emailed me earlier and said he was not able to attend tonight's meeting. He wishes everyone happy holidays. So I passed that along. Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner.
Not a whole lot on my agenda tonight. You know, we've been pretty busy with cleaning up after the storm. I will say that I did get in two grant applications to better back roads, one for the over project on Greason Road, which has to be done whether we get the grant or not. And then the other is for the road erosion inventory update, which we have to do every three years. We did our first one in 2018, so we have to do one now in 2021. And I applied for a grant for that. Typically, you get those. That'll cover my time and possibly an intern that would work with me for a couple of weeks, actually doing the inventory. Other than that, we're still cleaning up on a few streets here and there. Some of them did get a little narrow on us and we've been winging those back. The sidewalks are kind of a situation. We have a stretch from the mobile station on US Route 4 toward Home Depot. My little tractor is just not going to be able to handle that. The mobile station piled a large pile of snow on the end of the sidewalk. And then V-Trans came down through their snowplow and winged everything right over on top of the sidewalk. So it's quite deep and, you know, maybe after things settle down after this next orange bell, maybe we can get down there to clean some of that up and get some of that out of the way. But anyways, I did get from the mobile station down to the town line by Applebee's, opened up and widened out, and that's finally starting to get melted out. So that section is open. The section of Cold River Road from Adele Stanley, I got down just below the Mission City Church. And at that point, there's no place to put the snow. So, because of the U-Haul trucks that are parked so close. So I made a place that people can actually step off the sidewalk and walk for short ways on Forward Road to get to the end of the street. It's only maybe 150 feet. And then in Central Island, I did open up everything from Evergreen Cemetery down as far as Caris Reel's Research and Development Building. Typically, I don't see a lot of footprints or use from there around the corner. That's, that's really difficult to do with the amount of snow that we have, basically because the sidewalk and the curb are together and I just, we just can't find the curb. So I'm probably either going to fall off and tip over or something. So I just didn't feel safe doing that. And then I opened up the crosswalk in front of the town hall and the section in front of the town hall, it's in there, and the town hall down to the first custard houses. And was able to get that open up. So there are some stretches of sidewalk that haven't been addressed. Maybe there will be after things settle down and disappear a little bit, we can get those opened back a couple of days. Kind of deal with that volume of snow with that smaller tractor, it just doesn't work very well. So other than that, we're almost all caught up. We should be in pretty good shape tomorrow with everything else. Hopefully, that's our big storm for the year and everything else will be quiet and calm for the rest of the winter.
Well, for the rest of 2020, yeah. Any questions for Byron?
Mary, I'd like to bring something up based on the information Byron sent us after our last meeting regarding the possible construction of guardrails at that intersection of Post Road, and I believe that's Post Road Extension up there, Post Road, what that is. I think that we should rethink the construction of guardrails at that intersection based on the design folks' comments that guardrails are more designed for traffic sliding along them, parallels, not running into them perpendicular. I think we're gonna create more of a hazard there and we may inflict more damage than what we are. And I think we should really rethink that. Signage, the, the double arrow sign that they recommended, maybe all of the stuff that was recommended by the state folks that Byron contacted, I think we should enact. Possibility of putting something else out there a little bit down the road from that intersection is a sign that says the key intersection ahead. Anything we could do, but I think it'd be in our best interest not to build a guardrail.
All right. Are you making a motion at this time? I, my understanding is Byron's not gonna be able to put the guardrail in this winter anyway.
Right, and I, I, I think that, yes, I'll make that a motion that we should reverse our decision to put guardrails at that intersection and focus on proper signage and anything we can do to warrant motorists of the intersection. As per the recommendations, I'm not sure what the gentleman's title was, but it's the email that Byron sent all of us.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, the motion is seconded by Aaron. What's your pleasure with this?
I move to table.
Based on what, Sharon? What are you gonna table it for?
Based on the fact that, let's get the signage up, let's see what happens.
So there's a motion.
So Sharon, let me just speak, let me just speak to that for a minute because I, I did look, took a look at some information from the National Traffic Safety Council and perpendicular crashes with guardrails. I, I've come to change my mind on that, are more dangerous than going over that embankment. And I do think that if we do all the other recommendations, it will cut down on it, but from a safety point of view, I was not aware that the, the, the construction of the guardrails makes them, with the cars that hit them in a perpendicular fashion, in that type of configuration flip a lot easier. And the injuries are a lot more catastrophic. So I've changed my view on that and I intend to support the motion.
So no one has seconded Sharon's motion to table. So the motion.
Oh, Sharon's, oh Sharon.
Sharon's motion to table. So the, the underlying motion to rescind the portion of our vote last time about the guardrails, that is the live motion now. Any further discussion on Joe's motion to not install guardrails?
May I say something, Mary?
Sure.
The landowner there, Mr. Skiroff, is adamant that he said he would like to see at least a short section of guardrail there. In, in the back of my mind, I have already started to make plans to put a guardrail there. But I think we need to get the signage up. The signage has been ordered. When that'll get delivered, I'm not sure, but the sign, as soon as the signage is delivered, I will get that signage up. So that will be up hopefully for at least half the, the course of the winter. And maybe that will give us some idea of traffic's response to runoffs at that particular intersection. I don't think I would discount totally not putting the guardrail there at this point, but rather would revisit that again next spring. We do have another intersection, very similar to the intersection down at the Cole River Road Stratton Road intersection. There are guardrails there. It is fortunate that there's a, a very soft shoulder there, so the guardrail posts don't stand up very well. We did have a head-on there last winter. Somebody fell asleep or whatever and he did hit that guardrail head-on. The guardrail, because of the soft shoulder, flexed and gave so that there were no injuries there other than the three thousand dollars worth of damage to the guardrails. And hopefully Progressive will come through with their money and will recover that cost of insurance. But my recommendation is just sit on the guardrail and revisit that in the spring, even if we do a site visit. And we'll.
I would, I would, based on that, I would second Sharon's motion.
Okay, so the motion now is to table. It, it sounds like at least until the spring, but we'll just treat it as a motion to table and it will show up on our agenda and we can take it off the table when there is a motion to do so, if the motion passes. All right, all in favor of the motion to table, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay.
Aye.
Joe, that's you?
Yeah, it's me.
Okay. The motion carries. We will table this and it will show on our agenda from now on until it's taken off the table. All right, thank you all. Anything else Byron or any questions for Byron?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Do we have Kevin Brown?
Mary, just quick, Mary, at some point, could we have a highway committee meeting and meet with Byron and discuss the information that we had started to get on the road project on the south end of town? And, you know, I have some stuff that Bill found for us and I, I'd like to discuss that and not let that fall away. I'm just really concerned where we've lost eighty-five thousand dollars worth of work.
Okay. Yeah, sure. And we have other items on, on the highway agenda too, so probably not this week, I would guess. So let's see what we might be able to do for the following week and it would depend upon Byron's schedule too.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can wait till after New Year's and do it, you know, maybe the first week of January would be fine, but I just don't wanna, you know, fall on this. You know, the next two weeks are kind of crowded with days off and stuff going on and we don't need to interfere with that.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. We'll set up a meeting. Nothing further than for Byron is our, oh, it looks like Kevin Brown is on the line. So.
Hello?
Hi, Kevin.
Hi.
Kevin has a couple of items to discuss with us and involving the lawsuit that we have. So I think due to pending litigation, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Don't move.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, we'll go into executive session for the purpose of receiving advice from our attorney and on pending litigation. So Bill, can you escort our visitors to the waiting room, please?
Yes, I will. Please stand by.
Got in touch with me. Again, the state's attorney, Rose Kay, has gotten in touch with me and we worked out all the numbers. And I think it's a really good thing for town wrong to do. It'll also further our per investigable abilities as far as training. It gives us some, some more in-depth cases to work on rather than nothing longer of being at the school and looking after children up there, but it's quite a bit less than than doing these types of investigations. And again, it's limited to twelve hours a week.
Okay, the grant is for twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety dollars. It does require the town to pay eighty-one eighty-nine, eight thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars, but that can include not only time, but cruiser costs, training and in-kind costs. That's item number two in the minutes that Bill did, and he does have stop as services, training officers and prosecutors. So I will entertain a motion to accept the stop grant for the purpose of giving these opportunities for Officer Cool.
So move.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Chief. Anything else?
Thank you very much. The last thing is more of a right now, most of us are on what they call the computer or CAD. Computer aided dispatch, they call it, how we keep track of our cases. And there's two, two forms right now. We got CAD and we have ValCor. And right now, there's a, we've been told that everybody is moving towards ValCor. That's what, that is gonna be the state dispatch in the future. So rather than waiting for everybody else to jump on a bandwagon, we're gonna go ahead and do it. It's a little bigger cost upfront. We have some training to do to get up to speed. But in the long run, we should save a significant amount of money rather than paying the CAD system. Also, any, all the other agencies on CAD, their rates for dispatch were quite a bit lower than the people who are on the CAD system. So hopefully that will be a help for going forward to get ahead of the curve rather than wait till party department has to go, they will be on a wave list for months and months by the beginning of the year. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Your police committee did meet. The minutes are there and we, there are a couple of other items that we discussed, but you can read them at your leisure. Any questions of the chief of police from any select board member? If not, thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right, next item, John Paul Fignan, Town Health Officer.
So nothing new to report. I mean, I think the clerk's office is working good. I haven't heard any complaints.
Okay.
I just gotta, just gotta persevere.
Yeah. Okay, thanks JP. Committee meeting updates. We did have the police committee and the minutes are there. Anything, any other committee meetings? If not, we'll move along. Update on project list, let's see, Center Rutland Pocket Park, we talked about the grant that we received. The railroad lawsuit, we had a discussion. The War Memorial, we have not, oh, I did provide some information to Marty Wasserman that had been given to me earlier about an estimate for some costs. So Marty now has that information. And it looks like when we do the meeting with the road commissioner and the highway committee, we should probably also talk about developments on Grover Drive. So that should be added to the list. Okay. So new business, we have done A, the municipal planning grant. We have done B, pre-town meeting. C, town to review emergency management with Marty Wasserman. Is Marty on?
He did not join.
Okay. Marty contacted me and pointed out that the third person in, the town has an emergency management plan and the third person on the list of responsibilities after, I think it's the, who's, fire chief and you, Bill?
Goes the fire chief and then Marty and then me and then now you.
Okay, so the fourth person on the list had been Josh as chair of the select board. He suggested that be changed to me as chair of the select board and we should have authorization for that change to occur and be sent into the state.
Don't move.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Item D, board to discuss designating all town employees as essential. Bill, you raised this. Can you tell us what this is about?
Yep, I received an email asking about this for our, for our town employees, specifically regarding the transfer station employees, asking if they were considered essential, because if they were, that would change their status for being able to be on the priority list when vaccines become available in the, in the near future. So they were asking if, if they could be designated as essential employees. I said, I said I would, I would bring it up to the board for a discussion.
And then the question is, are all of our town employees essential or should we? And so, JP, do you have any guidance for us on this?
Yeah, I think the only people in town government that are not essential is the select board members.
Thanks.
Seriously, we, we do not fit in any definition of essential that I've been able to find, but everybody else does, so.
Well, you're, you're a police officer, so you get to be essential.
Yeah.
Well, okay, but that's a different hat. I was talking about the board.
So now that we're really quite humble, is there, is there any motion that anyone would like to make? Does it need, do we need to declare? Was there some state agency?
Let me tell you, I don't think there'd be much debate that the need to get rid of your garbage is pretty essential.
Well, I agree. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
Do we need to?
I don't know. That's part of the question.
Well, out of an abundance of caution, I'll make a motion that they be included as essential workers for the town. Along with the other town, along with the other town employees.
Okay. Motion's made.
JP, I have a question. JP, I have one question. Why wouldn't the selectmen as the governing body be essential?
Because I can't find a definition that, that we would meet, that the, all this essential defining and regulations have been directed towards individuals, not a collective organization.
Would Chair of the City of Rutland be considered essential? I thought I heard that he was.
Probably. Probably the chair of the board could be considered essential, but you're stretching the definitions that I'm aware of.
Well, I just think that the board is essential, but I'm considered essential, so.
Okay. All right, so.
Sharon, there's no question that you're essential to the board.
JP? All of us, except for probably Aaron, are gonna be considered old folks and will be on that list anyway.
Okay, the motion before you.
I really appreciate that reminder, Joe. Thanks.
No, you're welcome.
The motion before us is to add the two gentlemen who help at our transfer station to the list of essential employees, which we consider to be all town employees. All right, that's the motion. Ready for the vote?
Second.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
By the same person, no less.
Would somebody else like to toss a second in there?
I'll put a second, but I, I want the board to be included.
Well, you, there's a lot of things, Sharon, you can want, but if you can't put a, a reason behind it, the town will function without us. It's things that need to be done on a day-to-day basis that are important. Highway, the, all of that other stuff that has to be, I can understand why select boards that work as a part-time government aren't as essential. aren't as essential. And, and so, like I said, you don't have to work.
I respectfully disagree with you, Joey.
You, you can, that's fine, but the town will function, and day-to-day operations will get along just fine, because we only need twice a month. If we were a full-time entity that was employed every day, then we would be essential. We would be running the town. But we don't.
But if the town needs to do something, and in order for them to do it, they need our permission, I would say we were essential. And in light of the fact that, Joey, I am considered essential already in my job, John Paul isn't his job, Mary as chair would be. So that leaves you and, you know, our Aaron. So I'm sorry, I think the board should be included.
I would be comfortable not being considered, immunity matters. I'd be comfortable not being considered essential for the purposes of this conversation, but also as, as a point, I was appointed here last week. So being that we, you can appoint a new member, should something, you know, I would, to that end, possibly not essential.
Okay, so are you ready for the motion?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, which is the transfer station folks being included as with other town employees as essential. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, item E under new business, we have already met with attorney Kevin Brown. Is there any other new business that any select board member would like to bring before the full board? Okay, hearing none. I would just add to best wishes to all of you on the board, and all of you listening in, and all of the townspeople in Rutland Town, and all of our department heads and our essential employees. Best wishes for the holidays and for a very happy, prosperous, and safe new year. Is there any old business to be discussed? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Non-debatable. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 Okay. Merry Christmas, everybody, and-
Merry Christmas.
See you again in the new year.